All right. I want to welcome everyone to the June meeting of the Finance Efficiency Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee Meeting. We do have Vice Mayor Valenzuela on the phone, and we will have Councilman Waring joining us on the phone here in just a few moments. But we'd like to start today's meeting like we start all meetings of this Subcommittee with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Nowakowski, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Well, absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just wanted to make a quick announcement, an introduction here today. I have a student at Sunny Slope High School who is going to be going into her senior year who's joined us today. A very packed day here at the City of Phoenix to be joining us. Avalon Rosas Oliver, thanks for being here today. All the members of the Subcommittee have been provided with copies of the May 20th minutes. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the May 20th minutes.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second? Okay. We may have -- it sounds like we may have lost the Vice Mayor for a moment, so we'll come back to that.
All right.
Because items three through five are actually information items. So do we have any presentations on these three items?
Chairman Gates, we do not. I would just point out on item three, that was updated from suggestions made last month by the Subcommittee about the Economic Indicators Report. Particularly, you'll notice in there that we've put the peak year of measures in there that given an idea of how we compare both against the previous year and the three-year average and against the peak year. And that is online now for the public to see. And then on item five, I would just recognize Mark Hartman, our Chief Sustainability Officer, in this report as we received a positive ranking on our energy efficiency, and that's accommodation of this group as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zirker. I really appreciate you adding the peak year on those economic indicators because it gives us an idea, a really good idea of how -- because that's a significant discussion that we've had is how far have we come down from the peak, particularly you can see it on property valuations, which really helps to explain to the public why, you know, issues with capital and any future bond programs are still quite a ways out. So thank you for that. Any questions from my colleagues on any one of those items? Yes, Councilman Nowakowski.
A motion to approve items three through five.
Second.
So I think on items three through five, those are probably just informational -- yeah, I think that may be a typo there.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Any further comments on those items? If not, then that will take us to item six.
Can we go back a few minutes?
Oh, yeah. My apologies. Before we move to item six, we now have a quorum, so we'll go back to -- I believe we did have Councilman Nowakowski. You'd made a motion to approve the May minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that takes us now to item number six, which is the efficiency item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mario Paniglau, our Budget and Research Director, is joined here today by our current city co-chairs of the Innovation Efficiency Task Force, Tony Macaron and Chris Halat from our Neighborhood Services Department. And three of our longtime and dedicated members are here, Roger Peck, Richard Ray, and Diane Shear. But, Mr. Chair, I would just ask you if you wanted to make any opening comments. This has been a major focus of this Subcommittee. And then I believe Mario has a couple slides, and we have a presentation.
No, thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for being here. This is an exciting day for us all who have been involved in this process, which was started back in 2010. We at the City of Phoenix recognize there's been this dichotomy as we've been dealing with the challenges during the Great Recession and following that, which is there's two ways to go. You either cut services or you raise taxes. And all of us on the council have been committed to the fact that there's a third way, and that is continue to provide the services that you are. Do it without raising taxes. And the way you can do it is by becoming more efficient in your operations. And city staff has done a tremendous job, but we would not have accomplished what we have as a city if it wasn't for our members from the private sector. And so Diane, Richard, and Roger want to thank the three of you really as representing all of the folks who have served on the Innovation and Efficiency Task Force over the years. We really could not have done it without all of you. And I think it's a model, what we've, you know, humbly, what we've been able to accomplish here in the City of Phoenix is a model due to the great partnership with the private sector. So I just want to thank you all, and I want to give special recognition to both our former city manager, David Cavassos, who started this effort on the staff side, and then our former mayor, Phil Gordon, who created this Subcommittee and named me as the chair in the beginning to make sure there really was a partnership between the electeds and staff. And it's been that throughout. And of course, I want to thank my current colleagues for their great service on this over the years because it really has been a wonderful, wonderful process throughout. We've been able to accomplish a lot, but today is about kind of summarizing those efforts and then a little celebration at the end of that. So with that, maybe I could open it up to my colleagues if they had any comments, and then I think we'll go to Mario.
Sure.
Vice Mayor?
He's a humble guy, so he's not going to say this. He can't -- I don't think he can pat himself on the back, so I'm going to do it. You deserve a lot of credit for this also, Councilman. And then, of course, our current city manager, Ed Zirker. The three, you know, Diane, Richard, you know, we have several people around the committee that they represent. Obviously, Roger is a good friend, and it seems like, you know, as our city continues to move forward. I mean, I've seen Roger at the reopening at the tennis center in District Five. I've seen him, you know, as we created the public-private partnership in Maryville for the golf course. And, you know, let's not forget every single city employee that we have, more than 14,000 city employees, who help find these ways to create efficiencies. We have 14,000 people who are thinking about ways to do their jobs safer and better and more efficient every time. It's as if we have 14,000 entrepreneurs trying to figure things out. So I want to thank our city employees for this. And again, I want to thank you again because you, as you lead this Subcommittee and you set the agenda and you help lead the discussion, you're a big part of why we reached this milestone. So congratulations. Thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, this is a fine example of what I call that Team Phoenix approach where you bring everyone together, you brainstorm, and you come up with great ideas. And, you know, it's every single department that came together and really found those innovative ways to take those cuts. And, you know, we want to thank the Advisory Committee for coming together and kind of pushing us in the right direction. Sometimes, as a city, we need a little kick behind our butts to get moving, and you guys did a lot of kicking, and we can see the results here. And, you know, as you look at all the different savings, I mean, it doesn't just come from one department, it comes from every single department. So it's really the efforts of all of our directors and our managers and supervisors and people just thinking outside the box and coming up with these innovative ways of saving money. But at the same time, the important thing is we're saving money, but with customer services still there. And that's what's really important, is that we're still providing the same type of service with less funds. So that's great. So I just really want to thank the leadership from our city manager to all the way to our employees that really gave their input, and the leadership of my colleagues and all the colleagues prior to us that really worked on this too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe we have Councilman Waring on the phone now as well.
Yes, I apologize for being late.
No problem. Thanks for joining us. I also wanted to recognize too, before I turn it over to Mario, we have several students with us from the ASU Cronkite School today, so thank you for joining us. Picked a great day to come. To -- we don't always have cookies here at the meeting, so definitely picked a good one. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mario.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your leadership and your focus. And members of the Subcommittee, thank you for all the great leadership that you've shown on this. I'm very excited to be here as someone who was involved from the very beginning of this Innovation and Efficiency Task Force and as the Budget Director. I'm excited to talk about all of the savings that we're talking about today. And so I'm just going to give a little bit of background. I'll go through my part very quickly and then open it up to any other comments. This task force was brought together, actually formed in December 2009. I think our first meeting was January of 2010, so we got to work very quickly. Initially, we were set up as part of the effort to respond to and address the $277 million general fund deficit, a huge hill to climb. And this task force and the work of city staff and the mayor and council were very much a part of that. The original goal was a $10 million goal in that first fiscal year, fiscal year 10/11, $10 million. And so that seemed like a big goal at the time. We got to work and found that the effort was very worthy, and we were making a lot of progress. So it wasn't long after that that another goal was set up of $100 million, to reach $100 million in savings by December of 2015. And so we just want to talk a little bit more about who was part of that initial effort. We have here, as you said, Diane Shear, Richard Ray, and Roger Peck as part of our private citizen members. But you can see on that list, the entire list of the others that have also served and were very helpful to us accomplishing this major goal. We've reached $103 million of savings, and we've reached it well ahead of that schedule of December 2015. And so in your packet, in your agenda packet, is a list of the 147 items that either were the savings that totaled $103 million that either maintained the service at a lower cost, but in many cases, we actually made the service better while we lowered costs. So you can see the great results of putting so much effort into this. $52 million of those savings is in the general fund, so more than half is actually in the general fund, and it just helps preserve our city services while improving our fiscal strength. Just a couple of examples that we don't obviously have time to go through everything, but some of the examples that have come up along the way. An innovation to put same-day curbside trash and recycling collection in place that actually increased the convenience for our customers while we save $2.3 million. So another example is with an example of right sourcing, where we, in our transit department, we transitioned to a taxi cab voucher program for senior center trips. Most of those people love the new service. We saved some money there, $823,000 in savings came about from that. Collaboration is another example, where in the court prosecutor and police department, we had teams that worked together in prosecuting domestic violence cases, and we improved the communication with the domestic violence victims, which actually had the effect of freeing up officer time and saving some costs at the same time. So we brought costs down by about $500,000 while enhancing that service to domestic violence victims. And then finally, the fourth example is just an example of how being resourceful and making use of the resources that we have in place to extend the life. The fire department refurbished 46 ambulances to extend the life of those ambulances by 15 years, saving almost $4 million. So a great example there of what this is all about and how we got to this number. So congratulations to the Subcommittee. Congratulations to our task force members. Congratulations to the City of Phoenix for achieving that $103 million. It's great work and an outstanding effort by all that were involved. And I would just turn it over to any other of our private citizen members who would like to discuss it further.
Speak for you?
You won't speak for me.
Well, nobody speaks for Roger. I thought I'd just push this.
Yes.
Yeah, nice, Roger. Nice, thanks. And what was said here was appreciated, I know by everyone. Critical thing that I think came through consistently was we might have been a vehicle to get this moved forward, as you are, but as you've mentioned, the number of people that work for the City of Phoenix that have worked so hard to accomplish so much with fewer and fewer people doing so much more, more, far more than they ever anticipated and probably more than they ever signed up to do. And the willingness from them to reach in, to grab, and to move forward has been noted again and again and again as how much of a contribution they all made. And I know they never get any recognition. The cookies are nice, but everyone should get a cookie because they have done one heck of a job, as have you and has the councils whole, because you've seen the value and you've opened the door and you've given them a chance. And this was the one thing that I think happened. It gave the people that had good ideas that were already in place an opportunity to express them and move forward. And when you had Ed or before him, David, they were willing to listen and put those things into place. And that wasn't -- it wasn't that it wasn't happening, but there was a kind of a logjam there that had occurred in the past. And this, as it occurred, gave the city the benefit of that collective intelligence of 14,000 people, the people in this group. And we may have stirred the pot a little bit, but it was really the people that worked for you, worked for the City of Phoenix. And for that, I'm grateful, and I suspected all of you are too, so.
Thank you so much for those comments, and I think that's right on because although the task force was a great part of this and you guys provided great leadership, in the end, it's the people who do their own jobs who know, only they know best, how they can do their job more innovatively. But again, it comes back to that leadership. And Ed, thanks for taking the torch from David Cavassos and not only, you know, carrying it on, but really lifting it higher and making it a part of everything you do and your leadership of the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to invite you and the members here to over to the table for just a quick photo opportunity with our Sunny Slope Viking green $103 million cookie pile.
I thought that was St. Mary's.
St. Mary's green. It's all purpose, and it's money.
Yeah, but it is all purpose, but this actually comes from Carl's Bakery in District Three, so thank you.
So if you go over there, we have David here. He'll get a quick picture, and then we'll pass cookies around to whoever would like. While we continue, our staff will pass out cookies to members of the audience who would like one as recognition too. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the next item, I wanted to see Councilman Waring. Did you have any comments?
You better save me a cookie.
Done.
And again, I apologize for not being there. I am on my way. We had a medical issue in my family, and I had to address that this morning, but we're on the way now, so apologize. And I guess my goodness is not getting a cookie since you're giving them all day.
No, we will save you one, and thank you very much. And Councilman Waring, you were where you needed to be, but we'll look forward to seeing you when you get in.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move to item seven, which is Health Insurance and Pharmacy Benefits Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is very timely. Actually, it's a great transition from the last item. When you hired me as city manager, I know that I made the statement in my interviews and afterwards that we were going to make this $100 million goal, and then we were going to double down and go for $200 million, which is a huge task because there's ever shrinking pool of opportunities for efficiencies. But I think the one pool of opportunity for efficiencies we have in the city that we need to get into has to do in the area of technology and big systems that we have that need to be transformed. So things like electronic procurement, which this committee has been working on, that's sort of the next frontier. But another frontier in this is one of these big areas of expenditure. Pension reform is one that is underway, but another one that we have been working on and this committee has provided leadership on is healthcare, our healthcare benefit costs. The world of healthcare is changing dramatically and quickly. There are opportunities that we need to take advantage of to move from how we have always done healthcare as a benefit for our employees and retirees to the way the world and the private sector is providing healthcare in this country. So to that end, we had a work study a couple months ago with you that sort of set some groundwork. Our team, Cindy Bezry, HR Director, Mary Kyle, Assistant HR Director, and our private sector advisor, Steve Schramm, have been working with employees to move us in that direction. And so today, on the formal agenda, we actually have two action items that are components of the strategy you set in motion earlier this year. And we want to have a chance to bring everybody up to speed on those and give you a little more information on that. So just by way of background quickly, as we said before, our healthcare costs have increased significantly, not out of line with the world, but that's what's happened in the world of costs. So but that is a dramatic increase that we have seen. This is an important benefit. It is something we know that we need to provide to be a compassionate and employer of choice for people to work with, is quality healthcare at an affordable cost. It has to be affordable to us and has to be affordable to our employees. In the world, this thing called a Cadillac tax, which is part of the overall federal overhaul of healthcare, is something that's out there and potentially could start hitting some of our plans in 2018 and by 2022 could, if nothing changes, which we wouldn't say we're going to do, but if we did nothing, we have an $11 million additional cost that would come our way by 2022. So what this says is we can't stay where we are. We need to move. And that's what this Subcommittee recognized in April. We can't stay where we are. And there are other fees and compliance costs and other things are going on, consolidation in the industry. I was just talking with Steve before. So the world is moving. If we break it down on an individual level, that cost increase to the city has gone from about $6,200 per employee for this very important benefit. Now this year, we have a budget of about $10,500 per employee. So as you see, there's a significant cost per employee for this critical benefit that we have an opportunity to see if there are any savings. And that was really our conversation previously. So now I'll ask our Assistant HR Director, Mary Kyle, who is really our healthcare strategist internally, to walk us through the next and explain what the two action items are we're discussing today.
So I'll just cover some of the information that I think we've given you in the previous presentations that we've done. So when we're talking about active employee healthcare, clearly, it's not only an expense to the city, but it's also an expense to our employees. So on the low end, our employees are spending about $1,000 a year to the high end of a little over $4,000. So anything that we can do to move that needle and to cut healthcare costs not only helps the city, but also has a direct impact on our employees as well. And then when we talk about our retiree population, because we have to look at things holistically and look at actives and retirees both, and retirees pay 100% of their premium cost minus some allowances that we give them. So there are two different kinds of allowances that we give our retirees to help offset the cost of health insurance. One of them is known as MERP, and MERP is a benefit that's been negotiated over time with our bargaining groups and varies anywhere from $117 a month to $302 a month that they can apply directly towards health insurance as a retiree. So the amount that they get depends on the service that they've had at the city and their bargaining category. And then there are some groups that aren't eligible for MERP but do get what we call PEP, which is a post-employment health plan. And PEP was part of our GASP45 solution back in 2007.
Just a quick introduction on that. So back in 2007, we were required to separate out employee healthcare costs from active costs. We used to have employees and retirees all in one big pool. We had to separate them out. And in doing so, the cost for retiree healthcare increased.
31.1% it increased during that period of time.
So the city's solution was to create a buffer for that healthcare increase.
Correct.
And that's the solution Mary's talking about.
Right. And so that PEP really gives employees money today that they can save and invest and then use that for healthcare expenses. So if you take the city's health insurance coverage as an active employee and you're in that PEP-eligible group, you get $150 a month into that post-employment health plan that you can use that money then anytime you're post-employment, so either when you terminate from the city or if you're a retiree to help pay for that health insurance cost. And then next is what we call the city-qualified contribution, which was also part of that GASP45 solution. And that really dealt with when we unblended the actives and the retirees, and the retirees saw that over 31% increase as a result of doing that. Then that city-qualified contribution is really another offset to what comes out of their pension check, and it helps reduce their premium. And the amount that they get varies anywhere between $90 and $375. And that amount varies whether you have single coverage or family coverage, and whether you have Medicare coverage or not, and your dependents have Medicare coverage or not. And so that city-qualified contribution is about a $6.2 million annual cost to the city today. And then as we look at healthcare rates for our retirees, one of the things that Ed and I hear both from folks that are already retired individuals and employees that are getting ready to retire is how expensive healthcare is as a retiree. So this chart shows you that if you have single coverage, you could be paying on the low end a little over $7,000 to almost $10,000 a year just for single coverage. And if you have family coverage, those costs are even higher. And we have employees that are paying on the low end about $14,000 a year, clear on the high end to nearly $30,000 a year for retiree health insurance coverage. So as you can tell, healthcare for retirees is astronomically expensive. So as we look at things that we can do in our health plan, both for actives and for retirees, if you think about all of the options that we have kind of as a lever that you could either push or pull a lever to make an impact on that health plan, lever number one is cost shifting. And cost shifting is looking at things like higher deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, or reducing benefits. And when you're doing that cost shifting, you're really then shifting those costs onto the employee or onto the retiree. The second option that you could look at would be network options, so looking at things like narrow network of providers, eliminating plans like an HMO, where you're looking to say, we're going to shrink that network, but we're going to look for plans that are more efficient in their delivery and potentially have better health outcomes for their members. The third lever is those marketplace solutions, and that is looking at options to provide health insurance coverage through a private marketplace solution. And that's one of the things that as we go through this presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about, but that we're also asking for you to get us an approval process on that today. So when you're looking at those marketplace solutions, you're helping your employees get that coverage through a private market- And cost shifting is looking at things like higher deductibles, co-pays, co-insurance, or reducing benefits. And when you're doing that cost shifting, you're really then shifting those costs onto the employee or onto the retiree. The second option that you could look at would be network options, so looking at things like narrow network of providers, eliminating plans like an HMO, where you're looking to say, we're going to shrink that network, but we're going to look for plans that are more efficient in their delivery and potentially have better health outcomes for their members. The third lever is those marketplace solutions, and that is looking at options to provide health insurance coverage through a private marketplace solution. And that's one of the things that as we go through this presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about, but that we're also asking for you to get us an approval process on that today. So when you're looking at those marketplace solutions, you're helping your employees get that coverage through a private marketplace where you're spreading that risk out amongst a bigger pool of individuals, but also providing employees or retirees more choice and affordability in the kinds of coverage that they can get. And then the fourth lever that you could take a look at is alternative strategies, looking at cost containment and service direction. So help steering your employees to lower-cost alternatives, so instead of going to the ER, going to an urgent care or a convenience care clinic, potentially like in a grocery store, steering people towards lower-cost diagnostics, then also looking at accountable care organizations, and then a dependent eligibility audit. So as we've worked through our solutions, I think we've talked plenty of times about having a healthcare task force. So each one of our bargaining groups or employee associations has a seat at the table, and we meet with this group at least monthly and in the last eight months, more frequently than that. We also have a retiree member on this task force as well, so they've helped us work through lots of different modeling, strategies, lots of discussion about what we can do to make our health plans more affordable and sustainable long-term. So let's talk about what the solution is that we've discussed and worked through healthcare task force for retirees. So for them, we're looking at lever number three, which is that marketplace solution. So this would be moving our retirees out through a private exchange where they would get their coverage and be connected with like a concierge service that would help them find coverage that's affordable for them and meets their individual needs. So this would immediately lower prices for our retirees, and it would also result in some savings to the city in that city-qualified contribution. So that $90 to $375 that we talked about, that reduces the amount of premium that comes out of their pension check. And we worked with a retiree subcommittee as well as our healthcare task force, and the retirees have agreed to move to this marketplace. So in the last couple of months, we've done an RFP process to procure a private exchange provider to work with our retirees and with the city, and we're recommending that we use Towers Watson and their One Exchange platform to help our retirees move to the marketplace. And some of the reasons that we picked them are the number of clients that they have that are using their exchange service and their experience with public sector organizations. They have 1.1 million retirees using their exchange, and the cost for us will be about $400,000 in the first year and then about $250,000 for each subsequent year after that. And we would pay for these costs from the savings of not having to provide that city-qualified contribution in the future. So if we're looking at how retirees get their coverage today, if we look at that column on the left, today, our public safety individuals can get their coverage either through the city of Phoenix or they can get their coverage through the state, through the public safety retirement system. If they get that coverage in either place, they are eligible for a MRRP or a PEP contribution, and they can use that city-qualified contribution to reduce their premium. And then public safety individuals also get a subsidy from the state that they use. And then our FIRE folks also have a subsidy that they get through their union organization. And then for our general city employees, they only have coverage options through the city of Phoenix currently unless they were going to go out on their own and get their own coverage someplace else. And so they have that coverage through Cigna or Blue Cross. They can get a MRRP or a PEP contribution to help reduce that and the city-qualified contribution. So now if we look over at the right, beginning in 2016, moving to that marketplace, our public safety individuals would still have the option of going to the state if they liked the coverage that they could get there, and they could use their MRRP or their PEP to offset that, and they would continue to get that public safety subsidy as well. If they were going to look at the marketplace, in that solution, they could get MRRP if they're MRRP-eligible, but we might also have some retirees that would qualify for a federal subsidy because maybe their household income is low. So in that scenario, they could have MRRP or the federal subsidy. They can't have both, and that would be for the pre-Medicare group. And then for our general city employees, in that marketplace, again, MRRP or PEP would fall into place, and if they're a low household income, they could also qualify for the federal subsidy. So today, as a retiree, you get the Blue Cross or the Cigna plans that the city offers, but in looking at things at the marketplace, there's lots of options out there for retirees and a much broader set of options that they have in our existing plans. So they could have different carriers. If somebody had family coverage, a spouse, you know, the primary retiree could have one plan and their spouse could have something different, and if they had children, they could have different coverage. So really, the ability to tailor that coverage to the individual need is enhanced by looking at the marketplace. So this is just to give you some examples of retiree costs. So we talked about how expensive healthcare is for our retirees. So if we were looking at somebody in that age 45 category, the blue and the red bars on here show what our current premium costs are today if you're MRRP-eligible or if you're PEP-eligible. So the reason that MRRP is less is because you have that MRRP subsidy that you're getting that's reducing that health insurance premium. PEP, if an individual has a PEP account, they get to decide how they're going to spend that. But then as we look at the exchange options that are out there, you can see that somebody could get comparable coverage to what they have today, but for much less cost. So looking at anywhere from $8,400 to $9,700 that somebody would be paying for that single coverage today, and out on the exchange, they could be paying anywhere from $3,900 to $4,400. And I gave you examples of platinum and gold plans, which would be the most comparable to what we have today. And then as we look, as we continue to age, you know, our prices today would remain stagnant rather if you're pre-65 or post-65 is when those premiums change. But even as we're continuing to age, you can see that on the exchanges in those gold and platinum plans, you'd still be saving money by going out to the exchanges. Age 60, you still have savings out there. And then as you move into that Medicare space, so this is an individual that is age 70 today, they'd be paying anywhere from $7,100 to $8,200 in the plans that the city offers. But on those Medicare exchanges, if you picked a Medicare Plan F, which is the closest plan to what our employees have today and the most lucrative pharmacy plan out there, the annual cost would reduce down to a little over $2,400. So I think, you know, this just illustrates that by moving to the exchanges, our retirees could be saving significant money.
Just a question on this one. So the amounts that you have that the retirees are currently paying, is that before the city contribution is taken into effect or is that after, taken into consideration or is that after the?
These don't include that city-qualified contribution in them. So these are the full premium, the blue bar is minus the MRRP that somebody would get, and we did that MRRP at $202 a month. And then that red bar for those that are PEP-eligible is the full premium, because those folks don't get that city-qualified contribution. So as we're talking about, I mean, our solution for retirees is to move them out to that marketplace where they'll be connected with that concierge service to help them get their coverage out on the individual market. And then for our actives, we're continuing to work through the solution for our actives. So some of the things that we've worked through with the healthcare task force are looking, excuse me, at network options. So in particular, looking at the pharmacy options. We haven't been out to bid for a little while for pharmacy. We're still in an existing contract with Cigna, but we know that the market has changed and we know that there's some substantial savings that could be seen in the pharmacy. So some of the things that we may look at for pharmacy is narrowing down the selection of pharmacies that you can go to, so that we're eliminating some of those that are the most expensive places to get prescriptions. And then also looking at a mandatory mail option for folks that take a maintenance medication, so things like high blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes medication, getting those only through mail order. So you'd get a certain number of fills through a retail location, and then you'd mandatorily have to move to mail order because we get better discounts at mail and our rebates are better at mail. And there's also savings for the active employee or their dependents by going to mail order because you get three months' worth of medication for two co-pays in that scenario. So we know that there are other things that we can do with regard to pharmacies, such as renegotiating the existing contract that we have, looking at other options. And so we most recently did an RFP to procure a consulting firm that would help us with pharmacy solutions, and we're recommending Towers Watson as the pharmacy vendor. So we had six bidders that bid on that, and Towers was the recommended bidder, and the cost for that would be about $102,000 per year, and that would be paid out of the healthcare benefits trust. And the cost of the savings that we could potentially see in that pharmacy would outweigh the cost of what that contract would be for us.
And just, you know, unfair question, but I mean, give us an estimate, give us a ballpark of what type of savings we might be looking at on making these changes to the pharmacy program.
So if you looked at things just like narrowing the pharmacy network, for example, and maybe reducing some of the higher-cost retail places to get a script filled, about $1.8 million worth of savings there. If you looked at mandatory mail, anywhere from $3 to $5 million worth of savings there, so significant savings to be had.
And that's on an annual basis?
Correct.
Thank you.
And so for plan year 2016 for health insurance for our active employees, we're committed to working with that healthcare task force to continue to look at other solutions and options that we have to reduce costs. So things that we'll consider would be cost shifting, looking at co-pays, deductibles, out-of-pocket costs, network options, not only for pharmacy, but also looking at that in the medical side of things, maybe a high-performing network that's a little bit narrower network than what we have today. And then doing some other alternative strategies, a dependent eligibility audit, we've talked to this group about that in the past as well. And so we've done an RFP for the dependent eligibility audit, and we'll likely have a recommendation on that one sometime in August and bring that back to either this group or to city council. So that dependent eligibility audit is really focusing on making sure that folks that are covered on our plan really have a legal right to be covered on our plan and that we're not covering family members that aren't eligible for our health insurance coverage.
Councilman Waring? So could you define narrowing and high-performing, those two terms, as you just used them in relation to this?
Do you want to answer that, Steve?
Sure. For the record, Chairman Gates, my name's Steve Schramm. I'm the benefits consultant working with the city. Councilman Waring, so typically what happens is people use narrow network and high-performing networks interchangeably. The idea is that the entity, be it either the insurance carrier or the ACO, or it could even be the city, has gone out and has evaluated the effectiveness of providers. So they look and see who provides the best value. So not only the best health outcome, but also at the lowest cost, and they try to bring those providers together. So it tends to be a smaller subset of the providers that are defined as your high-performing network, and the purchaser, in this instance, the city, would use tools to direct individuals towards that high-performing network.
I guess, that sounds expensive, I guess, to start, I mean, and I don't know how you would know the individual outcomes for each of our employees. That seems to be kind of what that implies. Am I wrong? Am I misinterpreting?
Actually, it's a cost-savings process. What ends up happening is there's a wide disparity in the ability of the provider community to effectively provide healthcare in a way that reduces costs on a long-term basis. You have a range of provider effectiveness. The idea behind a high-performing network is you identify just those providers that provide you the best outcomes at the lowest cost. There are very sophisticated analytics that go behind it. The analytics are not expensive, and in fact, the ROI for high-performing networks relative to the analytics used to identify them are easily on the order of 10 or more to one.
So this is a service we buy? Is that effectively?
Effectively, it is a process that you go through.
So we're not doing it in-house? I mean, that's...
No, so as an example, Councilman Waring, Chairman Gates, so we, as part of our last presentation, when we talked about what were the options that we were considering for both the actives and the retirees, the current vendors, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Cigna approached us after that meeting and said, we have high-performing networks that we can bring to the table. And so they presented us, using their own sophisticated analytics, a proposal for, here's how we could save significant amounts of money for the city by using a narrower, high-performing network.
So with people who are already going, so I guess are we talking about, we have an employee and they like their primary care physician? Is that person, the primary care physician though doesn't meet the metrics, and so now our employee can't go to that person? I mean, the metrics may show it's a terrible physician, who knows, but the employee is happy. I mean, is that a scenario that could happen? Because I'm all for saving money, it's just that is, we've got to kind of weigh the cost-benefits of that.
Yeah. So Councilman Waring, that is really, you know, when you think about, can somebody not go to them? Maybe in that particular network, you could not go to that primary care physician. But that's really why you want to kind of think about what you offer in your healthcare as maybe layers. So you think about, today, we have a high-deductible health plan, we have two HMO plans, and we have a PPO plan. So you kind of have a broad selection of benefit offerings if you think about those in layers. So maybe the primary care physician that you want to go to isn't in this particular network, but they're in this network. So you have an option leaving this plan, going to this plan, being able to see that physician. But what might come along with that, though, is some increased premium cost to see somebody in a different network.
And I'm fine with that, so the employee can decide, no, no, it's really worth it to me, so we're not pawning that cost off on the taxpayer to go with what we feel is a more ineffective, okay, I'm fine with that, now that you've explained that. So chances are, somewhere, they're still going to be able to find the physician that they want, they just may have to pay more for the privilege of going to that person. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to give you something clarifying, that we are never going to know the health outcome of an individual. We know things on an aggregate basis or on a disease-state basis, but we never will know something on an individual.
I mean, there's so many, I guess my question earlier was, there are so many different diseases and so many different possible outcomes, there's how many different kinds of cancer, there's how many different kinds of everything.
Right.
And so many different specialists, I mean, you might only have two people who work at the city who have a certain illness. I mean, how does it adjust for that? Maybe it looks like, maybe he can explain how this kind of works. I'm more curious than anything, but obviously, we're basing our decision on it, too, so it's certainly...
Certainly, Councilman Waring. So if you think about the book of business that a Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or a Cigna will have, is they will literally have hundreds of thousands of lives. And so they have very sophisticated metrics where they can look at those and say, well, we may only have one or two. At a population health level, the outcomes are much easier to predict, and so they can look at effectiveness at a population health level.
But I guess, you know, our employees probably, in almost every case, unless it's something extremely rare, wouldn't be going to Cleveland or something to get treatment. It would only be, it would only be our 14,000-something people, and then I guess, if you're saying all the Blue Cross people, so all the people in Arizona who are going to one doctor, so is that what you look at? It's not just Phoenix employees, it's you're looking at people in the Blue Cross, for example, network, and then they would have potentially hundreds of people going to that physician, even though we only have a couple, because it's a rare thing. Okay, and then you look at the outcomes. Okay, I understand how it works. Okay, thank you.
So as we look forward to plan year 2017, we'll continue to look at network options, the potential of marketplace solutions for our active employees, and that, you know, just continuing to work on any option that we have out there for them, trying to leave no stone unturned with the aim to reduce costs for both employees and the city.
And just one follow-up on that, as we look at 2017, so this concept of marketplace solutions, so actually moving to that, what came out of the last presentation on this is that there really haven't been any government entities that have gone that direction. So I'm happy to see that kind of pushed out a year. So obvious, you know, what I'd love to do is maybe we can have an update here in six months or something, and obviously, I know you'll be scouring the trends, what's going on there, and if we are starting to see, especially government entities, starting to look at this as a real option. I'm all for being an innovator, you know, cutting edge is good, bleeding edge is where we start to run into problems. So I'm happy to see that pushed out a little bit while several of these... So I'm happy to see that pushed out a little bit while several of these intermediate fixes are being recommended to the subcommittee.
Okay, so as we talk about intermediate actions, for 2016, our intent is to move retirees to the private marketplace. And we'll realize between four and six million dollars worth of savings by doing that through the reduction of that city qualified contribution. So this afternoon, the contract with Towers Watson will be on the formal agenda for them to be the marketplace provider for us and help do that connection with retirees and coverage out there on the individual market. We'll continue to look at pharmacy benefits for active employees. And the consulting services for the pharmacy benefits consultant, again, will be on the formal council agenda this afternoon. And Towers Watson was the selected vendor for that one as well. The dependent eligibility audit, that one we're thinking will come to the council, the formal council, sometime in August or September, and that we would work on the implementation of that. Some of it will happen during open enrollment this year, and then the remainder of that process will happen in the first quarter of 2016. And then healthcare task force discussions, Steve and I will continue, and Ed will continue to work with the healthcare task force, looking at options for them. But right now, we're very focused on trying to come in with a 0% premium increase for the plan year that will happen January of 2016, and then looking at those additional levers for longer-term savings, starting with the plan year 2017 and beyond. So long-term steps, and part of this study would be, you know, looking at narrow network options for medical and/or pharmacy, looking at marketplace solutions for employees to move to a private marketplace, continuing to work with the healthcare task force, and that we would bring you an update to the subcommittee sometime in the fall of this year through spring of next year. If we were going to make plan design changes for 2017, we need to be ready with an action plan for that by July of next year, so that we're ready to handle open enrollment for that period. So our recommendations for today, we're requesting that the subcommittee recommend the selection and the related expenditures for Towers Watson to provide the private retiree marketplace for us, and the administration of the health reimbursement accounts for retirees, and that Towers Watson also provide consulting services for the pharmacy program for the active employees. Any questions that we can answer for you?
Councilor Nowakowski.
I have some questions. So just some clarification, so 73% of our budget goes towards public safety. So those individuals that are sworn officers and firefighters, they can actually go to the state if they don't want to go onto our marketplace program. What's the difference between the state's medical plan and that marketplace?
So Councilman Nowakowski, that's true today, that as a retiree today, they have the option of being on the city's plan or going to the state. And to talk to you about the differences in the plan, the state offers some plans that are very similar to the city of Phoenix, but they also offer some Medicare-eligible plans out there. You know, and to tell you what some of the differences are in premium depends on whether you have single coverage or family coverage, you're Medicare-eligible or you're not. So I can definitely give you some information on that. But if we're looking at, you know, the state's plan in comparison to what somebody could get out on the private exchange, some of those scenarios that I gave you today in that premium slide would be very similar. So, you know, looking at somebody that could get a gold plan or a platinum plan, for example, those rates that I gave you would not change. So, you know, again, significant savings, whether it's the city's plan or the state plan, you know, somebody could be saving in excess of $3,000 to $4,000 per year on premiums.
And then the pharmacist, basically going to a mail plan and going to selected grocery stores, can you give me an example of that?
Okay. So if we were to talk about a narrow network, for example, it would mean potentially that we would remove Walgreens and CVS from that network. So they tend to be two of our most expensive places to fill prescriptions. So if you eliminated those two locations out of it, you could still go to Fry's, Target, Bashes, Safeway, Costco, local pharmacies that are around the valley to get your prescriptions filled. So, and again, that would save about $1.8 million. And then I think your other question was around mail order.
Correct.
So if, for example, I took a medication for high blood pressure and high cholesterol, today I have the option of going to, you know, Target or Costco or any of those local retails to get that filled. If you're moving to mandatory mail, typically what happens is you get three fills at a retail location. And once you get that third fill, then you mandatorily must move to mail order, so that you're getting that prescription through mail. And that saves not only the plan money, but the member money. And that's about a $3 to $5 million savings in that mandatory mail. You know, you could lower, you could lessen the amount of how many fills you could get at retail, and then you mandatorily must move to mail.
One of the things that I learned and is, we, we think because we pay a copay, that every pharmacy costs the same.
Right.
It does not. There are different costs that the plan bears. Your copay may be $5 or $10, whatever it is, wherever you go, but that's not how much they charge the plan based on pharmacy. And so this is trying to, to get to the low-cost pharmacies to save the plan, as Mary said, it could save $3 to $5 million.
Ask some questions this specific.
Just, I'll go first.
If you don't mind.
No.
So what you just said, so our employee, not trying to do anything wrong, but they're, they have no incentive to find the cheaper product, because they're paying $5 or $10, period. But there is a considerable difference, again, borne by some taxpayers.
It's totally rational behavior.
Yeah.
We don't get the price signal as a consumer that it costs anything different, so we go to the most convenient place.
Closest one.
Not knowing that perhaps the most convenient place is twice as expensive as something a little less convenient.
But the end product that they would be getting, obviously we're talking about people's healthcare.
Right.
Should be identical.
Correct.
You'll get amoxicillin here, or you'll get amoxicillin there, but the dispensing fees and all that other stuff are different, the price signal doesn't register with us that way.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying.
Yeah.
I have another question after.
Okay, Councilor Nowakowski.
And this whole marketplace solution, has there been any other major cities that have put this into practice?
John Andrews, can you come help us on this one? Yeah.
Introducing.
Yeah, I will. So John Andrews from Towers Watson is coming to the table now, and John can answer this question for us from a Towers Watson perspective.
Hello. How are you doing? So your question is what other large cities, and I'll answer it with that in mind, but also with other, other government organizations as well. So we have worked with 62 public sector organizations over the last several years to implement the same solution. From a large city perspective, Colorado Springs is on the larger end of the city spectrum. We have four states that have moved their populations as well. So state of Nevada was the first, state of Rhode Island, we're currently implementing the state of Ohio. So there's been some fairly large organizations that are much larger than cities as well that have considered this. There are university systems, counties, Alameda County is another large organization that comes to mind.
And just a clarification, we're talking retirees?
Correct. This is the retiree marketplace.
My concern is this, is that we're the sixth largest city, and we have all these employees that are retired, they're used to a medical plan that we provided to them, and all of a sudden, it seems like we're kind of being a testing ground to see if this is going to work or not. And that's my big concern. So how do you clarify that, that we're not this testing ground that if it'll work or fail, or it's been tested, in other words?
So Councilman Nowakowski, that's one of the things, is we went through this RFP process, and we were looking at a partner to help us with this retiree marketplace. They had to have significant experience in doing this. So Towers Watson has 1.1 million people on their retiree exchange, so they have a proven track record, you know, that they've done this for other employer groups. There are plenty of large, private sector organizations that have already moved their retirees out to an exchange. You know, CenturyLink, AT&amp;T would be examples of big ones. So one of the things that we looked at in that RFP process was, you know, the experience that they had in that, the number of members that they've transitioned to a private marketplace, also their customer service liaisons. So as you talk about, our employees are accustomed to getting their health insurance through the city of Phoenix. You know, when they get their health insurance coverage through us, they really have the option of two carriers and multiple plans. This will offer a variety of carriers and a variety of individual plans out there that folks can select from. So it's really going to give them some different price points, some different availability of carriers and plan options that they can select out there. And then as you think about that, that marketplace and kind of that concierge service that I've talked about, that really becomes key and critical in this transitional process. That if I'm a retiree, I spend probably a minimum of an hour on the phone with that concierge, talking about the physicians that I use, the medications that I take, if I had to go to the hospital, what hospital network would I want to use? And then that concierge takes all of that information that you've given them, runs it through a set of data analytics, and then you have a follow-up conversation with them at a later time. And that, that concierge basically says to you, based on all that information that you've given me, your physicians, your networks, your medications, these are probably the two or three plans that best suit what your needs are, not only for today, but predicting out what some of your additional healthcare needs might be for in the future. So that personalization of care and assistance is probably going to be enhanced over what it is today with, you know, my benefit staff that I have.
I mean, it sounds great, but is there, if we vote on this today at formal, is there a way for us to change it if, for some reason, somehow, we've talked to some of our colleagues in other cities or states that are saying, you know, that it sounded great, but it didn't work out for our retirees? Is there still a, a safe period where we can actually come back within six months or so and say, hey, timeout, here's what we're hearing from other big cities?
Yeah, well, the plan year starts January 1st, 2016. And so this is a critical time, starting in the fall, to get information out, get people signed up, do the education. So once we start down the path, we need to commit to the path for at least a year of experience, although even that would be quick, I would say.
That is a correct statement, yes.
I feel comfortable allowing our public safety individuals to do that, because they have an option. If it doesn't work out for them, they can actually go to the state's plan. Our city employees, I mean, some of them were actually hired based on their, on their benefits. I mean, we're not paying them that top salaries that other, in the private sector would actually get. So they take in consideration their benefits at retirement time. So I think that's where, I'm kind of, kind of stuck in the middle here, where it sounds great for the city of Phoenix that we're going to end up saving millions of dollars, but at the same time, the commitment that individuals have made by, by coming in with a lower salary, by, I mean, we just did a milestone right here. And this milestone was possible because of our employees coming to the table and saying, you know, we're going to take some major cuts, and we're going to have some freezes, we're going to take some furloughs and all that. And we're here celebrating a milestone of $103 million, but it was sacrifices that were made and promises that were made, and people that are banking on some of these benefits. So that's where I'm having a little hesitant on the other employees besides public safety, because public safety, I believe, they have an escape route if they need to. And how do we guarantee our employees if this doesn't work? And I feel like it's kind of a testing ground. If there's another top 10 city that actually had this, and I can actually talk to some of my colleagues there and say, hey, does it work?
These guys talk about their experience at Towers, sort of with Steve.
So Councilman Nowakowski, if I could address that. So here in Phoenix, we have worked with APS, with their retiree population as an example. So that would be a viable alternative to speak to. But this strategy is, is actually not new. You know, this is a strategy that's been around now 10 years. It's, it's two years for the, the pre-Medicare population, and most employers that offer retired medical benefits have been, those that have not yet moved to an exchange strategy for the retired medical, have been waiting so that they can move both pre-Medicare and Medicare at the same time, which I think is a, an objective that the city of Phoenix has as well. But going back 10 years ago, that, you know, the private sector embraced this strategy much earlier than, than some other public entities have. But, you know, it's been proven as one of the few strategies that you have, as one of the levers that you could pool, that actually has a win-win scenario. I know that sounds cliche, but this is one of the levers where the, the employer can reap the benefit of savings while the participant also wins. And that's, that's an analysis that's been proven time and time again with this marketplace. And it's, it's a factor that the marketplace brings with cost efficiencies, that your, your small population of a few thousand retirees is now part of a much larger pool that has millions of participants in it and market competition. And so it really becomes an arbitrage opportunity of these price points for these individual plans as a, as an alternative to a group plan structure that you offer today. And, and we, as Towers Watson, would be a facilitator to enable you to access that marketplace.
Councilman Waring.
Yeah, thank you. So back, so we, Mary and Ed and I have talked about this a number of times, and I thought I knew something that maybe I was wrong about. So I can't remember if it was during our hearing about this previously or at one of the meetings in my office. So I think you used the example, I'm just saying this one, but, but I think this is a specific example, you said Costco, people could go to Costco to get there. So, so I thought they could go to Costco in perpetuity, because that was a lower-cost provider. Is it, is it they can only go there three times, and then they have to shift over to the mail order? Is that, or did I get, did I get that confused?
So Councilman Waring, if, if that mandatory mail option is something that we implement in our active coverage beginning in 2016, if you're getting something that's a maintenance medication, and a maintenance medication is something that you're taking every single day, then in that kind of a scenario, if you're going to go to a retail location, you get a set number of fills at that retail location, and once you're done with that, you mandatorily must move. Because, you know, a couple of things happen, when you think, when Ed talked a little bit about, about the cost of a prescription, you know, we're all kind of programmed to think, do things cost $10? Does it cost $20? Does it cost $40 if I'm at a retail location? But you actually have that drug cost, so the actual cost of the, the drug itself, plus a dispensing fee that you're paying as part of that whole prescription cost. So that's where, you know, we, because of the volume that happens at mail, the drug cost typically goes down, and the dispensing fees go down, so the rebates that our plan gets back from that are increased, as well as the reduction in the out-of-pocket cost to the employee. So as we continue to work through this with the healthcare task force, you know, one of the things that they're really focused on is how do we reduce the premium cost to our employees and have, let them have money in their pocket? This is a pretty easy way to be able to do that.
So I mean, just, the reason I'm asking, I think, probably Councilman Nowakowski, it's, it's a different version of the same thing. I mean, by definition, our retired employees, I hope they don't get offended if I say it, are, are older, because they, by definition, worked, you know, a full career, and now they're retired, 20, 25 years, so probably at least, in most cases, probably in their 50s. I'm sure we have, they're mature, thank you, yes. You're such a wordsmith. It's like sitting next to Churchill. It's just, it's really very nice and very helpful. But, so, I mean, I'm sure we have some in their 70s and 80s and everything. Sometimes folks have been doing things a certain way, as Councilman Nowakowski suggested, like to continue doing it a certain way. But, so just for those watching at home who this might impact, you'd be saying, you know, you might get to try, you know, Costco or whatever, three times for your maintenance drugs, and then they'd just be shipped to your home at no extra cost to you, but at a big savings to the city, helping us provide other services. If I boiled it down, is that kind of it?
Councilman Waring, you have to think about that solution, though, for pharmacy as an active employee solution, and take the retirees out of that mix. So when we're talking about the exchange solution for the retirees, they would have options to get things filled at retail and/or at mail. And they wouldn't necessarily have the same restrictions around what we're doing for actives. So if we're.
We're talking about two different pools of people.
It is, yeah. And so you really have to think about, the pharmacy solution is what we're talking about for the active employee population.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so it's really just for active employees?
Correct.
That they would be, maybe, is there a chance of getting maybe like a chart with side-by-side of the differences between the two? Because I'm, I am sorry, I get, you know, we've had a lot of briefings and so.
So one of the things about this pharmacy, this pharmacy recommendation is really to bring Towers Watson on to be consulting to us about how those things. to bring Towers Watson on to be consulting to us about how those things might work.
Okay.
Those decisions are going to have to be made in the fall. So that decision about, are we, you know, particular drugstores in or out in three months?
I understand you're not going to have the chart today, but-
And so, but that chart will be helpful as we have that discussion.
Yes. And if it's just for me, then don't do it. But maybe if the other guys fail, it's like, it's, because it is, it does get a little bit confusing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, though, for the information.
Other questions or comments from my colleagues? I guess the thing I would kind of bring us all back to is that we're not looking, we're not having this discussion in this vacuum. We're having this discussion in light of the fact that, to his credit, the city manager has given us a sneak peek in what's, what we're facing in the next fiscal year, which is tens of millions in budget deficit. So we have to figure out where that's going to come from. And that's why I'm so appreciative that this discussion has been brought forward. And so, I want to just put a point on the discussion, the potential savings. Again, so going to the marketplace for the retirees, potential savings is how much?
Four to $6 million.
Okay, so four to $6 million there. So that's, to use Councilman Waring's discussion, we'll kind of put that in a box over here. So in this one column, four to $6 million. Then we have the pharmacy discussion. That's for active employees only.
Correct.
Right? And so, that, the two potential savings buckets, I guess, one would be if we just went to, you can't use Walgreens and CVS anymore, that's about 1.8 million?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's another one, which is three times, three times is not a charm. You've got to go to, you've got to go to mail order. That's three to $5 million.
Correct.
So those are, we don't get to add those two together, right? It's either one or the other. Is that correct?
You can do them. They're not exactly active.
Correct.
Okay.
But you can do them in tandem.
So probably, probably $5 million in savings would be the max from that. So again, that's, so we're talking about a potential of $11 million in savings for the upcoming fiscal year. So it's real money that's involved. Of course, we're all on this subcommittee sensitive to the change. It could be involved. But we're talking about very significant savings here. Yes, Councilman Waring.
So again, we touched on this, and I'm not sure, this is all, I remember exactly the answer. This is all general fund money, when he's talking about savings. Okay, you're shaking your head no, and that's what I thought the answer was going to be. So, do you have a breakdown, or you don't know? I think you didn't know.
It would roughly, I'm looking at Mario, there are roughly our split between general fund and enterprise funds when we do cost and benefits is about, what, 60, 40?
Between 50 and 60.
So maybe 55% of that is general fund, 45% accrues to water, aviation, but also the police specialty and fire specialty funds.
So for next year's budget, for the 1.1, 1.2 billion, what it's been anyway, our budget, it would be half of, I think your figure was $5 million, which is a figure I had before, too. So if we talk about savings, there may be $2.5 million towards our deficit, which is projected to be somewhere between 40 and 60.
40 to 50 million.
40 to 50. I mean, it helps. So definitely, it's important.
But that's, that would just be the retirees.
Oh, I understand. I understand. Yeah, the other stuff. But, so the other, we'd be talking about starting, you and I have talked about this before, too. So, the best-case scenario would be January, well, it's probably not going to happen, January 2016. It would be January 2017?
The pharmacy benefits that we're talking about now would be for January of 2016. The overall healthcare-
Overall plan, yeah, right.
-health benefit plan for active employees would be January of 2017, although, as Mary said, and we're working with Healthcare Task Force, to do some things with the plans for 2016 on an interim basis that would also bring costs down. We just don't have those-
It's just, you know, one starts in January, one starts July 1st. So it's always, so this would affect the fiscal year 2016, 17. The overall, the biggest pot of savings would be in 2016.
Correct. For the plan year starting in 2017-
For half of that year.
That would be, that would help the 2016, 17 deficit.
I just don't want to get overly optimistic in my head about, at least that's going to chip away at so much of the deficit and so forth. So it's not quite as much as it may seem on paper as we're talking about today.
But just a clarification, it would affect the whole, next fiscal year, it would affect the whole year, right?
Things that are implemented for January of 2016 give us half a year savings in the budget we're just passing now.
Yeah.
And a full year for 2016, 17. Plan year 17 gives us a half year in 2016, 17.
Right. We do need some pictures.
I'm sure there are people with like a baseball scorecard at home trying to put all that down on paper.
Yeah, you keep telling yourself that.
Oh, you've got it all committed to memory?
No, no, that people are actually doing that.
Oh, there are people writing this down. Well, I know, and I have two viewers, so, but there are no illusions, Bill.
All right. Well, unless there are any other questions or comments on this, I would entertain a motion, if there is one at this time.
Move to approve.
Okay. Now, and let's just be clear on what you're moving. What is your motion? Because we've had a lot of-
What would you like the motion to be?
Are you-
What are you prepared to, I'm just kidding, Bill.
Yeah. Are you making a motion with respect to the retiree piece and the RFP for pharmacy? Or do we want to take those separately?
I am willing to move both of them. But if you sense there might be disharmony on this committee, then, all right.
Let's see if there's a second.
I was simply indicating I was okay with both. I apologize for being so self-centered.
Not at all? Do we have a second to that motion? I will second that motion. Okay.
Thank you.
So, again, just to clarify, so this is a motion to move, again, to take this up to the full council this afternoon, correct? Okay. To move to the exchange for the retirees, and then just to do an RFP for consulting services on pharmacy-
Is actually awarding the pharmacy consulting services based on the results of an RFP.
My apologies. Sorry. Yes, consulting services to, maybe to come up with an RFP for, yeah, for moving forward. So, for what that looks like. So, with that, any discussion or questions on that motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Abstain.
Well, I know under council rules, abstain is a yes, so.
I'm a yes vote.
Okay. Okay.
I was going to say, no.
All right, yeah, sorry. That's the council rules. Okay, by three to one vote, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And this will be going to full council this afternoon.
And I will pass the mantle of Dr. No to Mr. Nowakowski. Yes.
How does it feel?
Oh, wow.
Laura would be so disappointed in you. She'd give you that look.
All right, moving now to our last, or to item eight, which is FMLA administration.
Good afternoon.
Cindy?
Good morning, I should say, members of the Subcommittee, Councilmember and Chairman Gates. What I'd like to do for you is to go over a quick background and preview of some work we've done on our FMLA administration, and at the end, talk about going out for an RFP in services. As you know, this was a major issue that came out of the core analysis that was done earlier this year. As a federal regulation for FMLA, what we do is we are obligated to provide 12 weeks of unpaid leave for serious health conditions, birth care and adoption of a child, as well as some exigent military care. We provide that on a paid basis if our employees have sick leave to utilize. What we're focusing on right now, coming out of a very significantly evaluative effort of our FMLA, is our city processes for administration. What we have realized is we're spending over 10,000 people hours per year just on processing FMLA. We use a lot of paper documents. We are attempting manual tracking and notification, and we're having difficulties with communication as well. And a city that decides that's not uncommon, especially in a decentralized function. Coming out of the evaluative work, there was a strong recommendation that we centralize this. And there are various things we looked at as part of that evaluative, whether it was limited resources, some of our inconsistent practices, and some of the perceptions associated with family leave versus not family leave, are we being nice, and some favoritism concerns that came forth out of that. Just as way of snapshots that we took to discuss as part of the core analysis, here's kind of the population we're talking about. In the month of January this year alone, 660 employees took close to 12,000 hours of FMLA-related leave that we were tracking manually. We think we need a better system for that. We know we need a better system for that. In that same month, those FMLA hours that were used accounted for these hours in these departments. And so you can see, it's a fairly significant month-to-month issue here in the City of Phoenix. Compliance with the federal law is key, critical, and important. The work plan that we've been undergoing throughout the year, as we started in January through June during a significant evaluation, we've looked at the data across the city. We've had some consultant resources and some legal resources out of the Law Department help us understand the requirements under the federal act. We have preliminary recommendations, one of which is to centralize our processing, and that's the reason we're here today. We realize that we don't have the resources currently in city HR to do that. So what we'd like to do is process an RFP out to the market for a private sector source to become our FMLA administrator. I can't tell you today what that will cost. What I can tell you is, we would be happy to come back to you. If we can utilize different resources in the city differently to comply, that's what we would be looking for. If we get authorization to do this RFP from you today, we'll go out on that with the summer so that we're ready to come back in September with some recommendations, and all of the final outcomes of the benchmark studies that we've done for changing our FMLA program.
So the bottom line here is, this is a federal requirement that we need to comply with. We want employees who should be on Family Medical Leave Act to be on it for the right amount of time to, for whatever, whatever reason it is. But we're concerned, because we have so many employees, and we've done it in a decentralized manner, that we're not administering it consistently and effectively. So we should bring that administration back to HR, but we think that that administration is more than HR can bear. And so the recommendation is to issue a request for proposals, because there are private sector firms who actually do this administrative work, to see what they tell us they can do, evaluate that, and bring that back to the subcommittee in the fall. And it may be that it's too expensive, too intrusive, or maybe that it's affordable and very, done in a way that benefits employees. And we just need to see that. So that's really the request today, is for us to take the next step. And then, any taking of the final step to actually implement it in that way would come back through a recommendation to the subcommittee and to the full council.
All right. Well, we do have one speaker card and one not to speak. So let's, if it's all right with my colleagues, we'll start with those first. Louise Schmidt, two minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Gates, members of the Subcommittee. That was a good point you guys brought up on the last item, item number seven. This item number eight, the outsourcing of FMLA, with all the lawyers we have on the city staff, and all the federal and local and state requirements that the city has to comply with, I find it hard to believe that the city can't comply with this, with these federal regulations. I'm confident that our staff knows that. We can centralize this back to main HR, and, you know, you bring all those outside people in the different departments who are doing this, and you centralize that back to main HR, but you have main HR do it. FMLA is, I mean, it is, it is a federal regulation, but I'm confident that with all the attorneys and staff and city manager that we have on hand, that we can comply with these, with the federal regulations. I really don't think it's a good idea to outsource this. If you just look, this week, the city, the state of Iowa did something similar, and it's going to be very expensive. They're going to charge, I think it was like 1. something million to administer that for the state employees, which is about 19,000 or 20,000 employees. So I know this is just an exploratory thing to get some fees, but I just think that, you know, that part of the, part of the burden that's been put on main HR, maybe not being able to comply, is because we have so much staffing cuts. We keep cutting our employee levels, you know, year to year. So you're putting more and more on people to do, on the HR staff. But I think the idea that I would recommend is that you bring those external people in the other departments to main HR. That way, they're all following the same, the same guidance and the same, and there's one reporting structure. And I think that's a viable solution before we try to spend staff time or more tax dollars trying to outsource this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, so Mr. Schmidt raises good points. I think, though, they're the points that we would want to address in the fall. This really isn't an issue about whether we have lawyers to do it, because the issue is for our lawyers is, we know we have lawyers who can help us with that. They're setting broad guidance. This is really talking about our ability to administer on a daily basis the flow of paper that has to happen, or the flow of information. It probably shouldn't be paper, it should be information, that has to happen to actually administer on an employee-by-employee, day-by-day basis, Family Medical Leave Act compliance. And the question is whether, in centralizing it in HR, do we have the resources to do it? And I will commit to you that we will do an evaluation at the end as to what it would take to do this by way of city employees to do it, versus whatever proposal we get from an outside vendor. So to that end, I think that's a fair request from Mr. Schmidt. And we will certainly identify those two different ways of doing it, or even a hybrid with that, as we get to that point of it.
Thank you for that clarification. Just before, if you could just, just one second, just also, we have a card not to speak for Rachel Gumpert. Would you like to speak, or?
No, it's okay. I think Louise can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councilman Waring?
So, so we're doing this now. We just fear we're not doing it as well as we could.
Correct.
How many people are tasked with doing this? It's sort of their day-to-day job.
It's a portion of approximately 20 employees across the city, monitoring the records for what we currently have is 4,000 certified leaves.
4,000 leaves are ongoing right now?
Yes, sir.
Out of 14,500.
And keep in mind, though, it's not, every, all 4,000 aren't necessarily out today.
Right.
Because FMLA is a status that perhaps is a, I don't want to use a specific one, but condition that is intermittent. So there may be one day a week or one day a month where the condition that's FMLA-certified occurs, and then you're out that day for that status. So it's very complicated because it's all over the place. Some people use FMLA for maternity leave, which is a continuous, easier block to do. Other people, it's intermittent conditions.
It just seems like a high percentage of our employees. Does that track with other big organizations?
The benchmark study was, that was completed and indicates that we are higher than some of our benchmark cities. And at this point, we haven't, I don't have that analysis before me, but we will bring that all back to you so you can see where the benchmarks are. We're in the preliminary stages of that analysis now.
That seems like a much higher number than I would have anticipated.
And part of that is, it could be with our administration of, some people may default to, oh, this is an FMLA condition, but if you actually look at the law, it's really not an FMLA condition. It might be some other kind of condition, or an ADA thing. So that's part of what you get when you professionalize and standardize your administration of it, is a better way to track and assure that people are using FMLA who are qualified for FMLA, and other things that they might need are brought to them as they are needed.
So 20, it sounds a little hodgepodgey. So there's 20 different people who work on this, and are they each spending like half their time, or?
Anywhere from a quarter.
Is there a way to narrow that down? Maybe it was like 10 full-time people, and there's other people that go off and do whatever it is?
That's the recommendation coming out of this, that it be centralized and it be a specific emphasis. It is hodgepodge today. When you look at 30 departments in the city, and we're doing about half of those, and then the other departments are doing their own, it is very hodgepodge. So one way or another, there will be a format, as Mr. Zirker said, to centralize, whether it's done by city resources, by an outsourced vendor, or a hybrid. We just need all of the information in front of us to figure out what the best approach would be.
I probably should have used hodgepodge. It's a technical term. It's just very-
It's kind of like, it's kind of like wack.
It's like using a big acronym. I don't know. Confuses the audience. Thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, what I like to see is an org chart of HR. I know, different departments have HR people. I just want to kind of get a feel of, how does our HR department work? Who's on top? What's the different layers? How many departments actually have HR individuals, and how they communicate with each other? There might be some way to be more innovative and creative. And I know that right now, we're looking at outsourcing or hiring consultants. I think we need, maybe we need to look at the whole system itself, and we might have enough staff there to, and start spreading responsibilities throughout the different departments or so.
Chairman, Councilman Nowakowski, that will be part of, yes, that will be part of our analysis, is what existing resources and how might they be allocated to this, and give a comparison. Yes.
Bill? Yes. So I would like a follow-up, though, on other cities, and kind of where they're at as a percentage, I guess, would be probably the best way to do it. Because, I mean, 28% or 25 to 30%, that seems, seems just high.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just one question. So this would just be FMLA leave as opposed, because there's obviously other types of leave as well, jury leave. Jury leave, you know, is one example. Is that, is there an interest in expanding it, or is it the thought that just be looking at FMLA leave?
Our thought today is just looking at FMLA leave because of the complexities involved in the compliance issues. The other leaves, I think we're doing a very good job with because of the automated lamp system, and we're slowly bringing more departments into that system. So, our focus right now would be FMLA.
Makes sense. Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
So, the most, what is the motion?
We go forward with staff recommendation.
Chairman, the motion would be for us to issue an RFP to solicit responses to administering, how to administer a centralized Family Medical Leave Act policy at the city. So, we would get those responses and proposals and evaluate them, and then we would set them by evaluation, Cindy, and I would do of, if we did it through only city resources as opposed to what the proposals would be, and we would bring those back to you side by side and compare the different pros and cons of doing it either way. So, the action would be to issue the RFP for people to respond to us how they would provide centralized FMLA services for us to evaluate.
So, basically, it's just services, it's not hiring...
No.
Someone to actually do the work, right?
No, that would be a completely separate step that we would do only after bringing full information to you and evaluating it, whether that was the thing to do or not. So, this is not, this is not a vote to outsource, this is a vote to get information to evaluate the most effective way to do this particular administration.
Councilman Waring?
So, Mr., I guess I should say this. I mean, the only reason I'm making this motion, frankly, is because we're not hiring someone today, and we are going to get more information about this.
That is correct. This is not costing the city money right now.
If this was an up or down vote today on doing it, to surprise anybody who's ever seen us interact, I'd probably agree with Mr. Schmidt and say, you know what, we got to figure out a way to do this internally. But I am willing to listen. It's not really costing us anything other than hopefully a few hours of staff time to pull together the RFP and so forth. So, I definitely, I guess I should just signal to you guys, I definitely have my doubts about whether this is necessary. I'd certainly like to hear how we can centralize the operation we already have before we go out and hire someone, particularly if it proves to be onerously expensive. I mean, the Iowa example was mentioned, so if you have other examples besides that one, you know, I'd like to hear about them, too. I assume we will in the presentation.
Yeah, and to that point, we want to be able to have examples for you that are based on someone actually saying, in your case, we would think it would cost you this, and we can set that beside, in this, we think it would cost us this amount to do what we're doing now. So, we want to have those evaluations. This gives us information to make a further decision. It's not making the further decision.
I mean, outsourcing certainly is usually something I support, but in this case, we wouldn't be, not that I want to, we wouldn't be cutting loose employees or anything, we'd be adding the outsourcing to staff we already have. So, I mean, this is just additional cost.
We don't know that at this point. If, based on what information we get back, we don't know.
I guess, I guess I'll just ask, I mean, I understand we don't know how the RFP's going to go and so forth, but, but we're going to have to pay somebody to do this service if that's the route we go. We're not letting anybody go from our human resources staff, so how would it not by definition be...
Well, I'm telling you, that has been our practice, that we don't let people go, but that may not be the decision in the end.
Okay.
So...
I think it's an unlikely decision based on the history of this organization.
I think the issue that's been raised by Councilman Noakowski is really, it's discussing what the next decision is. This decision is simply to gather information to be able to make another decision, and we don't know what, we don't know what our recommendation would be in that.
No, I mean, I guess I understand that. I'm just saying, if we went down the route of hiring a firm, and we don't make any changes with current staffing, it's...
Then it is an additive cost, correct.
You know, we're already, at some point, we can't keep adding costs when we're facing a deficit.
And so, and just one thing I would say to that is that, you know, these groups, these outside folks who do the FMLA leave, that's what they do for a living, so they're good at it, and they may be able to help the city to...
Oh, and like I said, but if it's not revenue neutral, I mean, given the situation we're facing, that's why if it was today, like I said, I wouldn't be...
Yeah, I would assume that if you brought one of these teams on board, it wouldn't be revenue neutral. They would be able to find savings.
Hopefully.
Because they, because otherwise, why would you use this outside group? So, I would say, I think your comments are well taken, that at this point, all that we're doing is just approving an RFP to see what might be available in the marketplace.
Let me ask this, given the figure, I thought the figure from Iowa was $1 million, but we're not a whole state, but then Iowa's not that big of a state, so, relatively speaking. So, I guess I'm curious, do we have any idea how much savings hiring an outside group? I mean, do you have any examples?
I don't, for an employer our size. I have worked with external vendors for a much smaller employer, where the rate is determined on a per-employee cost for the administration of the system. I've not worked with an employer this large, so it's necessary from an exploratory basis.
What was the cost per employee?
It's about $5 per employee.
So, it's not, it's certainly not, it's not going to be $1 million, it sounds like.
My experience has not been that it is a large cost. It is, it is somewhat comparable to an EAP-type service, but with some other costs that may be associated for specialized report.
Because that was part of my concern, you know, I heard that figure, and I'm like, well, how are we going to save that much? I know we got a lot of employees, but I just, I didn't see how we're going to save enough to get money back, but I guess if it's a less, a lot less cost, then that's potentially, given how many employees we've got.
The team looking at this has no intent to increase costs.
Okay.
We know pulling that forward would be a serious mistake on our side.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that acknowledgement, so I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Noakowski, do you have comment?
My comment is, I think the system's kind of broken, and we're bringing somebody in to tell us how we should run it, or how we should actually administrate or create a formula. I mean, I wouldn't apply for an RFP if it's an in-house problem, saying, you guys have enough staff. Here's the plan, here's how I would do it. I mean, why would I even submit my strategy to the city or in an RFP process where it's going to come back to us, we're going to say, well, hey, we have an HR department, we need to centralize it, we need to make sure that all these HR departments under the 30 different departments that we have are communicating with each other, and we have the resources, but we're not just communicating with each other. Have we done an internal evaluation? Have we tried to figure out an internal solution before taking it out outside the city of Phoenix?
We would conduct that analysis simultaneously with the efficiencies that could be created by using an outsourced vendor. There are software considerations to be considered, there are methodologies for how an employee reports, how the medical documentation comes in, so all of that analysis will take pace alongside the outside vendor to say, can we really do it as effectively and efficiently as they can for the same cost by using internal city resources?
I think we try to fix the problem before we take it out for somebody else to look at our problem, and I don't think we're looking at our problem or trying to fix it internally. I think that I would like to see you all try to fix the problem, and if we can't fix it internally, then that's where we reach out for that support outside the city of Phoenix. I believe that, and a fine example is our Broadway Road, is that we had different departments tearing up the street three, four different times within a month. Nobody was communicating with each other, so we finally sat together, we had about 40 individuals in a room, and we started scheduling times where you rip out the street once instead of three or four times within a quarter or so. And I think that sometimes there's a lack of communication, because we're such a large organization, I don't want to blame an individual, but being such a large organization, having 30 different departments that we have to hire for, I mean, there's, there is a lack of communication. I think that we should try to fix it internally before we start going externally to try to find solutions.
So, from hearing this, if the Subcommittee would prefer, what we can do is we can take the summer to do that analysis, follow through with that all the way through, and come back in the fall with that, and set that beside the idea of, should we RFP this out or not now that we think we've got what our internal solution would be? Is that something that should be RFP?
I'd like that.
We could come back in September, having done that work, which we would be, which we would be doing anyway.
Yeah, I think that's preferable. Do I need to change my motion?
I don't think it got a second, so I think...
Oh, I never got a second?
You're good.
You guys are hurting my feelings, really.
Right, so do you have, do you have sufficient direction from the Council?
Yes, we do, right.
From the Subcommittee? Okay, this will come back the first...
The effect that this has is, any solution that we might do, that would include outside, would be slowed down by three months, but we didn't know that we were going to do that anyway, so that's the trade-off, so we're happy to do that.
And that would, and that would come back to the September meeting of the Subcommittee? And I would ask that at that time, maybe there also be a presentation of how other organizations have used these outside services, and, you know...
And the result.
And the results of it, yeah, I think that would help us all understand what we're looking at here.
Sure.
Anything, Vice Mayor?
I agree, I don't want to jinx anything, but the last two items, you had Louise Schmidt and Jim Waring agreeing on things, and I think that's a move in the right direction.
It must be the cookies, something in the cookies. Did you have one of the cookies?
Is that a Union button on you, or?
No.
Or an Ask Me Agree?
All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate your work on that. And we're actually going to also move to September, item number nine, in the interest of time, the members of the Subcommittee have other events to move on to, so with, at that, we will quickly take a look at the future agenda items that are being provided to the Subcommittee members in the, several items here, moving forward into the fall. Any additional items that my colleagues would like to see added to future agendas? All right, if not, then we will move to public comment, and we have with us today our friend, Greta Rogers. Greta?
We can still say good morning, barely. Good morning, it still is, it's not sound coming in. Is this on?
I don't think so.
There, is it on? Okay. I want to commend the city manager and the INES Task Force. I attended INES Task Force meetings almost monthly the first three years of its existence, and they have accomplished an incredible goal of savings, along with the employees of this city, whom I think are absolutely the best complement of employees any large organization in this state has, private or public. We have an incredibly high caliber employee throughout, and their sacrifice willingly to keep this city afloat, and it wasn't 250 million, we were told 700 million at the outset that we were short. 700 million. And I don't know where the other 500 vanished, but anyway, it was an incredible accumulation of mismanagement and maloperation of this city over years, years and years. And I thank all of you for having fiscal integrity and responsibility in the actions that you've taken vis-à-vis the city of Phoenix in order to keep us not just afloat, but doing well with less and with a concentration of effort from the employees of this city. And we can't stop, we have to continue. So, my hat's off to you, and I thank you and every employee of this city equally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greta, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.